Could we all rise for the pledge this morning, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Special day. This is our morning for swearing in, but we are actually, we just have a couple of quick little things to do before we go to that. Gentlemen, we have minutes of our meeting held on, I gotta get them in order here, on March 6th. Could I have a motion to accept those?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have minutes of our meeting held March 13th here.
I'll move the minutes to March 13th.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We will move on to new business, and our new business is the swearing in of our elected officials. Okay, alright.
Alright, so do you wanna have everyone who's here who's sworn in will stand in front of the
Table?
Board of Selectmen, the New Board of Selectmen, I guess come on this side as well.
Watch your head.
Yep.
Get ready for it.
Good morning there. Good morning, Mr. Frome. How are you?
Thank you.
So for those of you who are not the New Board of Selectmen, after you get sworn in, you can go in the hall with Cynthia and sign your oaths. So I'm going to first read the first half, and then when I say state your name, we'll go down the line and you can state your names. Alright, well, everyone, please raise your Alright. Upon taking your, the oath of office and having this appointment and certificate, a said oath recorded by the town clerk, you shall have the powers to perform the duties as a newly elected official for the town of Belmont. Maybe this is our missing member.
What? He's got him, Cynthia already.
You wanna hop in my car in the middle of the, with the oath? Alright, you want to read it right now? I'll repeat. Alright. Upon taking the oath of office and having this appointment and certificate, a said oath recorded by the town clerk, you shall have the powers to perform the duties as a newly elected official for the town of Belmont. As of March 20th, 2023, do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on you as a newly elected official according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. Alright, so those who are not New Board of Selectmen can go in the hall and sign this with you. Thank you.
Grab these and sign these as you're going through. The selectmen, please. Hillary's gonna come see you later because she's, um, check duty.
Thank you.
Sorry. Sing your truth here.
Alicia.
I wanted to double duty you.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Watch your head, Sonny. I feel like, I feel like a broken one. Watch your head, watch your head.
You didn't want to pick me up.
That's because I've hit mine a couple times and I know it hurts.
Oh, I did it too, believe me.
Alright, our first order of business is the Board of Selectmen assignments, okay? So our first, our first assignment is chairman.
I'll make a motion to have Ruth Mooney stay as the chairman.
I'll second that.
Alright. I think probably, and, and this is just because we have to take a vote, I think it would probably be in our best interest if each time we take a vote, we just go down through the line. Is that, is that okay? Then we're not, then it makes it easier for Colleen, obviously. Okay.
But we can either do, I have a suggestion.
Alright.
Well, so we can either go down the line or
Put our hands up?
I did create a roll call.
Alright.
Roll call and the thinking behind the randomization of the roll call is so that one member isn't following suit of another member in how they vote.
Oh, so we, we switch and swap?
So it's in swaps, so one person can't always say, well, I'm always gonna vote.
First, or, oh, I see. Got it.
We have randomized it and we already have it all set to go, so
Alright, alright.
We wanna, if that's okay with the board, to proceed that way.
You're fine with that? Yeah, okay. Alright. So we have a motion, and we have a second, correct?
Yes.
So we need a vote. Sharon?
So roll call one, John Pike.
Aye.
Sonny Patton.
Aye.
Travis O'Hara.
No.
Sharon Chaney.
Yes.
Ruth Mooney.
Do I have to vote for myself?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
So four one, motion passes.
Okay. The next one will be the vice chairman.
I'll make a motion to make John Pike the chairman, vice chairman.
Second.
Roll call number two, Sharon Chaney.
I have a question first. What are the duties of the vice chairman if I'm not here, correct?
They run the meeting.
They run the meeting, correct. That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if she can't go to a meeting or fulfill her obligations for whatever reason, then the vice chair would stop it.
Okay. Um, yes.
Travis O'Hara?
Yes.
Sonny Patton?
Yes.
John Pike?
Yes.
Ruth Mooney?
Yes.
Four zero, uh, five zero one, pass.
Okay. Now, the planning board rep. Obviously, I'm going to, and I believe, okay, I'm going to nominate John, but I believe that, um, I believe what he should, doesn't have to be nominated every year. Once he's on it, he can be on the planning board for his duration of his, um, of his three-year term, but I'm not sure. So I will elect, I will nominate John for the planning board.
I'll second it.
Roll call three, Sonny Patton.
Yes.
Sharon Chaney.
No.
John Pike.
Yes.
Travis O'Hara.
No.
Ruth Mooney?
Yes. Okay, the next one will be the budget committee rep.
I'll make a motion to Ruth Mooney, the rep of the budget committee.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call number four, Travis O'Hara.
No.
John Pike?
Yes.
Sharon Chaney?
No.
Sonny Patton?
Yes.
Ruth Mooney?
Yes.
Three two, motion passes.
The next one is the heritage commission. I'll nominate Sonny Patton for the heritage commission.
Okay.
He has served on that. Yes.
And I'll second that nomination.
Okay.
Okay, roll call number five, Sonny Patton.
Yes.
John Pike?
Yes.
Travis O'Hara?
Yes.
Sharon Chaney?
Yes.
Ruth Mooney?
Yes.
Five zero one, pass.
The next one is the conservation commission. Travis. Can I let you for that? Alright. I'll nominate Travis for the conservation commission.
I'll second that.
Roll call number six, Sharon.
Yes.
John Pike?
Yes.
Sonny Patton?
Yes.
Travis O'Hara?
Yes.
Ruth Mooney?
Yes.
Three two, motion passes.
The next one is the Canterbury Withdrawal Study Committee, which is going to be really important. Canterbury in Friday, at Friday's town meeting did, um, approve funds of money for, to look at that study. And obviously, that is, the study is to separate from Shaker Regional School District. I sat on that committee last year. I really don't care to sit on it this year because I definitely have a bias because I learned that if we do withdraw, Belmont alone is looking at an increase of their school budget of $4 million. And I didn't find their reasoning for separating. You know, being when my family left Belmont and we went to Canterbury, I was one of those children that rode a school bus two hours in the morning and two hours at night. That seems to be their, one of their gripes is more demographics, which I think every town, especially if it's rural, has that. But, but the problem is, there was only our school board member and actually Tracy Leclair and myself. And there should have been a third person, so we were outvoted. So it is really important that those positions be filled. It was an interesting, New Hampshire Department of Education came, so they were interesting meetings and I learnt a lot, but I don't really wanna sit on that committee. So I'm actually, I'm gonna nominate both Sharon and Travis because you both have children in school. I think it's something that's really important, alright? And I did learn a lot from it, but I still have a biased opinion about it, alright? Because after sitting through those meetings. So I'd like to elect both, I would like, even though it is required to have a selectman's rep, but one of you can be the selectman's rep, one can be a, it doesn't matter. It's the town of Belmont people, okay? That's what it boils down to. So I'd like to elect both Sharon and Travis to that committee.
I'll second that.
Can we talk about it first?
Sure.
Okay, so what is the time commitment of that committee that meets?
They meet, I believe we met, um, sometimes there was, I think one time we met twice a month, otherwise it's once a month. And it is, sometimes it's doing research, but in most cases, I believe the research has been done. I think it's more listening to the consultant that they're going to hire using these funds. That would be my thought. I believe the research has been done.
And we don't, sorry, we don't have to have a child in our school district?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, because my daughter is home schooled.
Oh, no, 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 no. And actually, actually, there were, I think, one or two people from Canterbury on that committee and they were homeschooled. Oh, well, one of them maybe was homeschooled, one went to private school. We have to have, well, we have to have a school board member and three, so we still need one more. It doesn't have to be a selectman, it can be someone else.
I'm gonna nominate Tracy then.
Uh, Tracy is not interested.
I don't just a child.
You better be careful, you better be careful. I already asked Tracy.
You oughta do what a father says.
Oh, I'm not sure. You can't, yeah, I wouldn't do that. I mean, obviously, they, and again, we don't know, this committee may want a whole different set, but we have to be prepared for that, so.
And I believe they're in my meetings, Sharon.
Yes, they are. Yep, yep, they were. And I don't think, they didn't start till August, I think, if I remember correctly. So they weren't right off the bat. At least that's last year's meetings. Okay, where were we? I'm sorry. Oh, Sharon, that's a question, right?
Yes, it did.
So now we need a vote.
Roll call number seven, Travis O'Hara.
Yes.
Sharon Chaney?
Yes.
Uh, John Pike?
Yes.
Sonny Patton?
Yes.
Ruth Mooney?
Yes.
Alright, I think that's
So at the moment, there's no other committees, correct?
No. I think that is all of them.
Town meeting update.
Yes, we had a very, what I would call a very successful, um, town meeting. We had 531 votes, um,
Which is, is that typical average, I think?
I think it's lower, a little bit lower than, than typical, but for a, a snowstorm and how bad we got chastised in the, on Facebook, I think it was pretty, um, pretty well attended.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think, um, the votes, um, were, you know, speak for themselves as far as, you know, how Belmont really felt, um, as far as the articles, um, our operating budget passed, all the union contracts passed. They're very happy about that so that we can keep and retain our current employees with the wages that they, they should be given and hopefully attract some new, um, hopefully
Some, fill some, fill some open positions.
Yep. Um, there was only two articles that did it pass, and that was the increase to the cemetery trust fees as well as rescinding SB 2 did not pass.
Okay. Anybody, anybody? No? I have something to say, though.
Obviously, we have two new, our two new board of selectmen, Travis and Sharon.
I do have something to say, though. I appreciate you and Colleen and the work you did putting the user's guide together. I handed out several of them, and a lot of people got back to me and said they were very helpful in helping them determine which way they were gonna vote. I just marked mine all up and I went in and I was in and out of there very quickly, so I appreciate the hard work that you guys put into those. They were very helpful.
They are, and there are good tools that you put out there so that voters can be educated. There's no, there's no, um, opinion either way on the board's guide. It's just strict information and how it would have, how some of the monetary articles would affect your, your tax rate, and if they haven't been passed and have not, um, just put any information out there.
Nice. Alright. Um, and hopefully, the department heads, if you've got open positions, especially union-wise, this will help to fill those positions.
Chair?
Yes.
I attended the Loudon Town Meeting on Saturday. They did the exact same thing as far as wages for their employees because they're trying to retain their employees. They had a large number, um, they lost a large number last year to the private sector. So it's just not unique for us.
Oh, it is not. We, we had
And the voters went for it very well. They, they wanted to keep the employees, so I wanna thank the town of Belmont.
Yeah, awesome. No, that, that was huge, very important to see that, um, you know, it, it passed by a lot, so which was important. Yep. Operating budget and wage adjustment approval.
Yes, so I have the, our operating pass, so we're not running on ID call, which is good. And then we have the wage, the April 1 wage adjustments for you all to sign, as well as the union contract. So I will, I do not have, um, police with me today because we're kind of in a, a discussion on two wages. But I have those tomorrow, and you guys have to sign your manifest.
Okay.
And then if you will sign all the contracts, it's kind of just a formality at this point because they are already approved and voted. And those contracts are fire, police, and DPW. And then after that is our statement of appropriations, which is just, um, this is basically relisting if there was any articles that failed, we would focus on our statement of appropriations, or if any were amended at the deliberative and had to be voted on.
And this was basically just money articles, uh, budget, budget articles, correct? Okay. That's the MS 232?
Yes.
Yes. God, that can't get any smaller to read off.
I know. On the union contracts for the two newbies, um, those are created before you guys are voted in, so you can just find a space to, to sign. I don't have your names on there.
I'll make a pile at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. You can leave them all at the end, then I'll gather them after.
Got a little promotion, didn't know.
There you go.
Yeah, right. I don't think that'll happen.
Nice try. Hasn't everybody been able to send you watching outside? Okay, now we'll move on to the New Hampshire DOT bridge funding opportunity. This is, this is on Union Road over Durkey Brook.
Yes, I received a letter from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation stating that they have informed us that Belmont, that Bridge Aid funding is planned to be available for the rehabilitation or replacement of the bridge noted above, which is Durkey Brook. They are putting us on their next tenure plan, which is 2027 through 2032. Based on the prelimin, preliminary data, NHGOT estimates the cost of the rehab or replace, to replace the above noted bridge is approximately 1.35 million.
For a culvert?
Uh, this is the bridge.
Wow.
They call it a bridge.
Okay, it's a bridge. A glorified culvert.
It's a culvert.
The municipal had these 20% shares estimated to be approximately 270,000. The actual project cost in local share will depend on the design of the bridge. Inflation and other project-related factors not possible at this time. So basically, we would be, this is a grant essentially, so we would have to pay 100% upfront and then after it's complete, DOT would reimburse us 80% and be responsible for the 20% match. They're just looking for us if we're interested or not. If, by saying that we're interested, it does not commit, commit us to this. It says right here, please note that checking yes does not legally buy in Belmont to enroll in the Bridge Aid program. We are simply looking for an indication that if Bridge Aid funding is available, that your municipality would be interested in pursuing a Bridge Aid project with New Hampshire DOT, that your municipality would work towards obtaining your local 20% match. Again, this is not until their 2027, 2032, um, tenure plan.
How much money do we have in that fund, in that bridge fund?
We have, sorry, do you remember how much we have in there?
No, it's all, the prob, the problem is we don't, we don't accept this, okay? So we got a letter a couple years ago from, from the DOT that that E3 bridge was on the red list, okay? So basically, what that means is they give you direction to move forward. They said, they said there was basically no, no maintenance or no, nothing needed to be done, but just had been recognized.
Yep.
So the problem is if we don't accept this and something happens to that bridge in the next, we're gonna, in the next few years, we're gonna be responsible for the whole bill.
Right, and they're gonna come in and, and close it down like we ran into on Churchill and then we're, yeah, so.
I'm not sure if you guys know where that is, but, uh, Durkey Brook is, um, Park, Willard Mallard's land, A833.
It's kind of in that Mosh, Moshie area, right? That low area?
No, it looks significant, but it is, it's definitely a box culvert type, like, range, so if, I mean, if it does fail and we have to do something, it will occur, you know, quite expense. I recommend, you know, in the future, if you don't go ahead with it, you don't have to. I wouldn't throw this out.
Sure, oh, absolutely not.
I would leave all our, I would leave all our
Yeah, all our doors open.
For the time being, and then vote for them.
So have you, have you looked at this bridge to see?
I'm not a bridge inspector, so
You're not a bridge
They, they inspect
Is it a culvert or is it a, is that a culvert, an oversized culvert?
It's a box, it's a box.
Basically, a box culvert.
Box culvert, yeah. Is it similar to Holy Road or?
They would be doing the same thing as they would be doing on Holy Road, but we had to
Yeah, Holy Road, right, yeah.
We took the bond on that, like, you know, if all fails, that's probably what, you're
How, how much, how, you probably can't answer this, but how many more years do we have on that Holy Road bond? Do we have, have any idea? Oh, so we're close to, alright, alright, okay, alright. I mean, what, what, what do you need a vote to move forward?
I'll make a motion to accept this opportunity from the, after DOT for the bridge funding opportunity.
I'll second that.
But we're not obligated?
Nope.
No, not at this point. No, no.
Checking yes does not legally buy in Belmont to enroll in the Bridge Aid program. We basically have a list of projects, and then once all the municipalities say yes, include us or no, then they can say, okay, we need to, you know, this is how much it's gonna cost us to do all of these projects. And then they put them into their plan and plan that up for their second, their next tenure plan.
But there are, there are grants out there for this type of thing.
They're gonna pay for 80%, we're gonna pay for 20, whether there's grant funding that we can do.
To get after.
I think we should be grateful that we, we, we've done on this, especially this, this bridge actually, I think I was notified two years ago, May 3, that it was gonna be on, was, it'd be red list. So for that, take a quick, take a turnaround, be able to get on this list.
It's huge.
The tenure plan is huge, big, so.
We don't wanna miss that opportunity.
You should be fortunate that we got on that list.
Good.
Did we get a second on that?
Yes, um, Travis seconded it. So we need a roll call.
And to your question, we have roughly 304 in the Bridge Aid capital reserve.
304?
Yeah. Okay, so roll call number nine, Sonny Patton?
Yes.
Travis O'Hara?
Yes.
Sharon Chaney?
Yes.
John Pike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have, um, oh, we don't have Otis. Otis is the
Otis is actually on the Zoom, so I think we have
Oh, we have Otis, alright.
Barry, John, and Alyssa are on Zoom with us from Otis, and then we have Barry and Barry, if you guys wanna come up.
Come forward, please.
Come forward and
Come forward. Thank you.
John and Alyssa, if you just wanna unmute yourselves.
How you doing, big guy?
Hi, Greg.
Good morning. Thank you. Okay, how do we start this discussion? I guess we start it by, um,
John had requested that Otis come back to give us an overview of what their proposal entails, um,
Time frame? When, how?
When, how?
Well, my, my only experience was the last one, and that wasn't a good one. And it wasn't your fault.
I wasn't involved.
No.
So, John?
Well, he, he made
Please don't pat me.
Oh, um, yeah, let's, um, see, let's have Otis describe the elevator, what their intentions are to do, and then we can talk timeframe and when it's most convenient to, inconvenient to.
Okay, we're ready, we're ready.
Without an elevator, so. Here, absolutely, so. I don't know, you guys receiving?
Yes, we can.
Uh, basically, the current elevator is, just serves its useful life. Uh, the crawler, the operator, and whoever did the components are now obsolete. Uh, it's harder to find arcs for them, you know, still can sometimes get far too built or ground something up, but obviously, it is Uh, it's harder to find parts for them, you know, still can sometimes get part of the belt or ground something up, but obviously this, if you do pass along, it's gonna be really maintainable. Um, the concern obviously is on being able to get a part, and you have a really extended long lead times, uh, to get it up and running. Obviously, there's other events, harmonizing too, obviously, other new, or safety features and everything with the new elevator, the biggest, that's the current, currently how it is, uh, step lead times, and also has some of the current problems.
Okay, so when kind of all these components are on their way out, um, we would expect the normal way forward is to monitor the impact of the frost, could be bigger fog, and the controllers, the power units, the wiring, the safety gear, the door operator, the door detector, basically everything that's loaded, they got them placed, um, with the best, you know, equipment that we have.
Excuse me, Elise, I can't understand you, I'm sorry, am I the only one?
No, I can't either.
Yeah, okay, sorry, I, I can't understand what you're saying, I'm sorry.
Is that any better?
That is a little bit better, and just, can you speak a little bit louder, please?
Yes, I will back. So basically, when all these components are on their way out, you like to replace them with a monitor base, monitor base and package, which includes the controls, the door operator, door detector, the wiring, the hall fixtures, and the pipe fixtures. So basically, going to replace all the electrical components within the elevator, um, within the facility after. And then at the normal way, it is kind of all one, you could do it, you know, individually, but, um, they're gonna have this, you can talk, you can get part by part, I mean, it's gonna be there multiple components, kind of in another elevator, so, um, typically, going at fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and it's gonna be about four to five weeks, I'd like to consider everything.
I didn't get all of that, but.
Um, so the fifteen to twenty week lead time is after approved shop drawings, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and that typically to turn around shop drawings is a couple of weeks or so?
Couple of weeks, great, good.
Okay, so we're looking closer to getting it into production, probably twenty-five or so weeks, maybe twenty-four?
Just gonna.
I'm there, I'm there, yeah.
Okay, and then another four to five for the install ones products are, uh, manufactured, yep, okay.
Okay, so what are we looking at, let's, let's do the, um, let's do the, um.
So if we go on, best case scenario, um, would be about twenty weeks, right, or worst case would be about twenty-four or so.
Okay. So you're gonna be, we're gonna be in, we're gonna be in October.
If you release today.
If we release today, and then it's four, how many weeks?
Four to five weeks for the installation on.
So, in reality, just a ballpark, we're talking January, roughly. So now, we have to determine, because obviously, we start budget, budget meetings and those type of things, but we've got our room downstairs set up for meetings, um. I guess, I mean, I, it's up to you guys.
What's the number?
Is there a time level in that?
Well, that's what I, uh, in my brain, I was trying, but I don't know if it really, you know, if it really matters, I was just, in my mind, wanted to know what we're, so we're talking, if we re, if we gave our approval today, we're looking at January of, um, what's the next, twenty-four, I don't even know what the next number.
Worst case.
Yeah, worst case scenario, right, right. Well, I always like to, you know, if we say January and it happens in November, it makes us all look better because we've done a faster job than whatever, but, um.
And building grounds.
I think we would probably be able to work this job to the fall so far, because for, to say it's a twenty-five, it's, you shouldn't have been another four weeks to work, but only thirty weeks left now, so yes, November is coming sometime, I think it'd be reasonable.
Okay, all right.
Building grounds do make us a temporary space, or if and when we have to pull the elevator down, downstairs for company, um, those not being able to take the stairs.
And obviously, we'll have to, I know we still have a small, um, um, senior group that meets, correct, I mean, you know? Oh, okay, I mean, and they can probably, obviously, we'll have to work around, and then we've just gotta find a place, um, there you go, yeah, okay, that answers my question, but I don't know if, can we do that, chief? If she wants to be upstairs, she can be, because there is two sets of stairs, right?
Yep.
Front and rear, I just thought about that, okay, all right.
Chair, we could set up one of the rooms downstairs.
If we had to. If we had to, all right, so, yeah, I'm sorry.
I just have a couple of questions on the proposal from Otis, I know that a few weeks ago, we received the notice about the controller being obsolete that we have, does the new proposal have a new controller in it?
Well.
You got one of these?
I have one, I have.
Cause it basically, basically, all it's, they're replacing all the electric, electricity and mechanical moving parts, the actual carriage itself, the thing you're riding is gonna stay the same, but the rest is all gonna be.
Yeah, I read, I read through it, but I wanted to verify.
Oh, it's okay.
Twenty thousand dollars, all right.
Yeah, yeah, it's expensive.
Another option to upgrade the interior of the cab if you so choose to.
The interior of it?
Yes.
Okay, and what is that amount?
About an additional twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, to do new cabins.
Really? I, I don't really think it needs it, but that's only my personal opinion, for twenty-five thousand dollars, I think we can, you know, yeah, all right.
John or Alyssa, what would remain the same from a, from the outside looking in, or the inside, you know, looking out, like, what would we be keeping?
I want to know. As I said, they can be the style of the elevator, um, they're going to keep the frame of it, they're gonna be taking the wiring, the safety glass, the, the place that I mentioned. Uh, this, the paneling pass here, that whole is pretty much the same in the inside, it's just you're moving, so, you know, overall, what we work, that whole is different, um, so what they should be doing off the phone, so, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So not, in, in a nutshell, not a lot of visual changes, correct?
Correct.
New buttons.
All right. Um, does anyone have any questions, I guess?
Chair, I can.
Yeah?
Uh, to Barry at BPS, uh, will you be providing the in-house electrician for any electrical work that's gonna have to be done?
Uh, yeah, so we would be providing all of the incidental work, um, necessary for, for this cover.
So we would, the town would not have to provide anyone for any of our, or?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
And those incidentals?
Uh, yeah, those incidentals.
Are roughly?
Roughly, dollar wise, would be, um, the whole package together without the cab would be over half, just under two hundred, around a hundred and eight thousand dollars, um, that includes some items that are appropriated in there that may not need to be had, um, with, with the contract, all of those funds would just not be utilized. So it's not a guarantee that would be spent, it's just dollars to try to accumulate those costs, specifically, um, if, once you get into the shaft, there's items that have to be, kind of, fire, um, grading the shaft itself, updating the pit matters, the grates, all that stuff are miscellaneous steel. Uh, we do have a sprinkler contractor, an electrical contractor, mechanical contractor, all of their appropriations to accommodate and facilitate the re, uh, renovation of the elevator itself, um, and then all the cutting and patching, um, the exterior for the controls, gypsum.
Drywall, whatever, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then also in the, um, uh, control room itself.
And, um, obviously, you know, it's kind of a, I know, I know you're gonna do this, obviously, obviously, it's the inspections, um, and I would assume that would be our code, and, um, fire would be doing inspections, and I assume there's a.
Yeah, we would go through the, the standard permit process with the town, um, make sure that all of the appropriate, um, facilities are in there, and then I'll see the state side off.
Okay.
Yeah, we need the state elevator.
Oh, that's right, yeah, oh, yeah, the state elevator, you're exactly right, because that's what.
They'll understand this elevator, though.
Will they?
Yeah, cause ours is the first one.
Oh, yours is the, okay, all right, okay.
This is the more conventional.
All right, and obviously, I think everybody here knows why we're having this discussion, because we've come to the conclusion that, um, the elevator is the first thing that we have to, um, take care of before we start anything else. I think we can, we came to the conclusion, the second thing is gonna be the generator, a generator, because obviously, because of the, this building and what Patrick has had to go through a couple of times when we've been down with electricity, that's been, uh, kind of a, obviously, kind of a little horror show, so to speak, as we all know. So this is kind of our first, um, um, first major investment to get this building, you know, renovated and up and running to the full capacity, if that's our game plan. Um, do I have any other questions, would, um, we'd like to take, um, you know, uh, I guess a roll call, as, is, is this board, um, comfortable with moving forward and giving BPNS the, uh, the okay to, um, move forward with this?
I, we can't really, we can't really do much in the middle until we get this elevator done, and it's gonna hold up the process, and we definitely wanna get going with it, that might be, so, as I'm with you, and I say, let's go for it.
I don't wanna get stuck in here.
Make a clarification, is the one eighty including the elevator, or is that your one eighty for all the costs plus the elevator?
That's what this, the.
Okay, just a second, you guys say all of the elevators, it's one eighty plus one hundred and five.
No, no.
Okay. Uh, and Barry, when we had talked, we had talks that, we hadn't given your, you know, your cost for just the elevator project, we had talked that maybe adding in other projects so that we could take, you know, have full use of your time, um, doing other projects while you were here with the elevator, so I don't know if you wanna explain that to the board, or if they wanna throw out some more ideas, um, I mean, certainly, there's stuff we could be doing too with the mill while we're waiting until November, or.
Yeah, no.
Then when it happens, and.
We, we just have discussions on what you have for available funds, and to maximize the onsite supervision while, while they're here, so they're not just, um, appropriated to the elevator, uh, they can oversee a smaller project, or, or something else onsite, um, just to try to maximize their time while they're, they're here, um, mobilizations, all of those costs that, um, are incurred by just getting onsite. Um, it, it might make sense to peel off, uh, a room, or a floor, or part of the mechanical system, or whatever you have for thoughts in the future big plan of renovating and, and.
Have we received an estimate yet for the generator?
The generator, no, no, we have the, the overall of cost of.
Yeah, I think, I think, and, and not that we wouldn't be in favor, you don't need to know that today anyways, correct?
No, no.
I think, I think I, I just know what the generator costs for the, um, police department, and obviously, we only have so much money, and we have to save money in that account. God forbid if there was something that happened with one of the other buildings that we have to address, we don't wanna, we can't spend it all, so I guess, um, can we, can we, my feeling would be to hold off that discussion until we have a generator cost, but that's my, my decision.
Well, I, my, my discussion today would be, get the, get it ordered, get the elevator ordered, I mean, six months, I was like, I'm gonna jump behind right now.
Yeah.
So, I think we go ahead with the elevator and put a cost factor to a generator, and get back to us, that may be able to be done at the same time.
Yep, LeBron, have you sized the generator?
No, I have not sized it.
Okay.
We just kinda knew what, you know, we knew what the police department costs us, and we don't even know if that's, the one they have is big enough, I have no idea, we just kinda used that as a, um, somewhat comparable?
You have, you know, you.
And we know we have to put propane in.
We need to be resized, um, you don't wanna buy one that's too big.
Right, that's exactly right.
Make sure you don't wanna buy one that's too small.
Nope, yeah.
So, each other has, um, electricians that they can, you know, engineers that can just quickly size it.
Yeah.
Just to make sure you're properly.
Right.
Going out and getting competitive prices on the correct sets, we don't know if it's a hundred K, or, or what, what's the.
We don't wanna have to be sitting here three, four years from now saying, gee, the generator's not big enough, you know, or whatever.
But you're probably just looking for life safety, you wanna operate in here off the generator, or just to keep things from freezing, and.
No, if we're, if we're gonna do it, it needs to be operating, cause the tower mom will be here, so.
Okay, so this will be operate like any other safety.
Yes.
Okay, so you're operating on a generator.
Okay.
I'm making, I'm making a motion that we accept the hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the, for the BPS for the elevator, and to hear further about a generator at next, at our next scheduled meeting that you can make it.
I'll second that.
Last time, a roll call number eight, I wanna vote for.
Hold on, I'm last.
John, please.
Yes.
Sharon, thank you.
Um, I have questions, sorry. Um, is this a contract or a quote?
What you were looking at is a quote.
Okay.
Otis is a contract, it would be a subcontract to the BPS.
So you, you guys chose Otis as the company to do the elevator?
Uh, no, that's the elevator that you currently have.
Okay.
We have, yeah. Sharon, to give you some background, the elevator we have is Otis', and we've had very, very good service with them, we're under a maintenance contract with them, and anytime we've had an issue, they've been right here.
Okay. And the problem is, is if we change companies, and tell me if I'm wrong, if we change companies, we might have to change all the, all the, everything, you know what I'm saying, the, the. No, I, I understand, I just, it's, um, I would, wanted to read this a little better, but yes, we need to have the elevator done, so that's a yes for me.
Yes.
Charles O'Hara?
Yes.
Yes. So you guys will work on the generator? And then we'll, yeah. Those are two. Okay, thank you.
We're all set?
We're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you, Otis.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Alicia, I'm gonna go to the podium. Okay, um, the next item is sen- cemetery trustees' request to appoint two alternates.
We have, Sharon had asked for you to put on the agenda.
Okay.
To speak to her request.
All right. So, obviously, from the voters, um, the petition article to go from three members to five failed, um, and I still would like a couple people to help me, so the RSA two eighty-nine dash six says alternate members can be appointed, um, for one year term. So I have two people that would like to be alternates on the cemetery trustee board for twelve months, if you guys say yes, and then you could point them. I guess my, I mean, it lost, so the taxpayers, the voters told us no, but now you're asking this board to say yes, I know that would be, I understand, on, they would be voting, your alternates would not be voting. Correct. Correct? Correct. Good, all right.
Question?
Yep.
Trustees don't get paid anything, correct?
That's correct. And this is strictly volunteer, they would come when they could make it, or I could say, hey, if you've got time, if you could work on this little project for me, um, the lady that was on the ballot, sweet image, she's, um, very interested in, um, the things that we're doing, um, and, you know, she would like to be part of our group. I would just like for them to have a title other than volunteer, you know, they would be, um. Well, they are a volunteer, even though they are an alternate, correct? Right. Is that what you're saying? Right.
Well, I, I think you're asking us to step against what the voters voted on, and, uh, I don't wanna say no to this, cause I understand you could use the help, but in the same token, I think it's up to the existing board, cemetery board to appoint any alternates, if this was the planning board, the planning board would appoint alternates as proposed, the selectmen would not appoint alternates for them. There's, same with the zoning board, uh, I feel that if, if they're gonna come from the trustees, they should probably come from the trustees, but the public already voted no not to include more voting members, now I realize there's a difference between a volunteer and alternate, and a voting member, but it's gonna look pretty bad if the select board goes beyond what the voters seemingly said no to. And that's.
I mean, an alternate is, is a volunteer on, on, on your committee. Right.
And I think, I think that's up to your committee to decide that, not up to us to tell you what to do with that, I think that's the committee.
The RSA states vacancy shall be filled by the selection.
I, I got it.
In the board, so it'd be the selection, may recommend the appointing authority, the names of no more than two, who may serve as alternates, so that would.
I'm sorry. Travis, I'm sorry.
So, uh, just a question about alternates. Do they, are they, do they have voting rights if there's not, if there's not one of the trustees present? Like, can they fill in as a trustee?
On, on the planning board they can.
Oh, they can?
And on the zoning board they can, you can step them up.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, say like if one is, if a person is second, gonna be out for a little bit or, um, needs an, an undetermined amount of time off, then we can take one of the alternates and have them fill in for that person.
So, we wouldn't be raising the size of the trustees, like, the ballot was requested, which was to raise the voting total to five. We would still be maintaining three voters, but they would just have a chance to have alternates to be able to still do their business?
And to step in if one of, one of those...
Yeah, so we're not actually going against what the voters want. They didn't want five people voting. This is still just three people voting just with a chance of two alternates to go in place.
Well, an alternate doesn't really have a right to vote unless the, unless the, uh, the board doesn't have a quorum. Then they step in to fill in, then they have a voting power. Otherwise, they can speak to any article they wanna, but they can't vote unless the, the forum needs you. Like, if you only have three of the forum and one's missing, then an alternate can step into that seat and vote. That's always the way it's been on every board that I've ever been on.
I agree with what he said, I mean, that's, that's the way it's been already. They, they, planning board and the zoning board who have alternates and get pulled up if someone's not there. And a lot of times, they, maybe a person doesn't run the next term and the alternate will step in and run only because they've been around the board and had time to serve on it. I think it's a good way for people to get their feet wet, but it's always been that, that board's or those two boards' decision to do that, not the select board.
So, really, the, the... Is this because it's a trustees' board that the selectmen have to agree to that? I mean, I'm just...
I can ask them when I go to the conference in three weeks if that's why that works, but...
That is weird, isn't it?
There's a whole list of projects and this lady is...
Well, they're still willing to volunteer and work on it, so it's kind of like, um...
Them being able to say that they're alternates gives them a little bit more of an vested...
Yep.
Interest.
We are, because they can, if they're an alternate and they, and someone doesn't come to that meeting, they are a member of the board. I understand that, but I think maybe you have research you just mentioned in three weeks, that might be just a place to ask the question.
I mean, wha- wha- why, why is it, why is it different from this than the planning board or something? I, I don't know, I, that's something I can't answer.
So, they, it's not, I just recommend to ask and you guys are gonna point.
But a lot like the conservation or anything else, you're exactly right.
You bring the names forward.
So, and so, and then you guys...
Okay, so let's do that because I have two names.
Don't you have to point like, all into the conservation commission or something?
Yeah, we, that's what we were just talking about, that's what we were, it's kind of the, it's kind of in a roundabout way.
The, the board, your, your board would vote. You'd bring it before your next meeting, you'd vote up to your people that are on your board now and you'd vote to accept...
'Cause I know the conservation people bring us some sort of...
They're not a board.
Huh?
That's what the difference is, they're not a board.
That, I know, that's why I...
They're not a board, they're not a board.
Okay, so in our...
Conservation commission?
So, the RSA says the board may recommend to the appointing authority the names of no more than two persons who may serve as alternates members to the board.
So, you're basically, there would have to be a vote at the cemetery trustee meeting to bring us two names for alternates and then we would vote on those who need us?
So, in the feb- the February, well, this is where it gets a little... In the February meeting, the board, which is myself, Kyle and Norma Patton, uh, George and Norma Patton, voted to, well, we had voted to put it on the ballot as a petition article, that was one. And then we did that in January. In February, we voted to come back before the board of selectmen and ask for alternates if the petition article failed. Norma was not running for three-year reelection because she didn't wanna be committed to three years. But she wanted to come back to be an alternate because it's only a one-year position. And then we voted to whoever, because we knew that both Hillary Horn and Sweet Image were gonna be on the ballot running for Norma's seat that she was vacating. We voted to ask whichever person did not win the election to...
Be an alternate along with Norma Patton.
Along with Norma Patton. And I called Sweet Image on Thursday on, after a conversation I had with Kyle. And I called her and she was very ecstatic about that possibility. So, I told her I was going to bring that up before this meeting. And I gave her our meeting time, our next meeting is the thirty, Friday, the thirty-first at noon.
Well, can I just make this, I don't have a problem with that, but can I just say, I know that when the conservation votes on something, that we get a, we get just a paper that the person has signed. Okay, that the person has signed that's volunteering, all right? And I guess, um, I'm not, I'm not objecting to that, but bring us a piece of paper, the next meeting, that they have signed, all right, each, with their intent, 'cause that's what the conservation...
And do you have records of that meeting, the minutes that you wrote?
I do, we just, um, what we do is we have the meeting and the minutes are typed up, they're emailed out for everyone's approval. Then the next time we meet, we sign them. Um, we didn't have any need to meet the first week of March, so, um, our meeting isn't until next week and then we'll sign up.
So, that'll be the week before, it'll be the, yep, that'll be the way, that'll be the way to handle that. Then we've done it the same way that all of the other boards do it and committees do it. All right, okay, good.
Thanks, you're done.
All right, okay. Do we have any other new business, Alicia?
I have.
Okay, um, do we have any other old business?
Oh, yes, we do. Actually, so you guys need to decide on your meeting. Are you willing to continue, is that a quote, uh, the, I think it's the first and third Monday at ten in the month? Or is there other, um, times and dates that, um, work better? I would still suggest that we at least still have it the first and third Mondays.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
If that was possible.
I'll make a motion to keep on the first and third Monday.
We just, that just a day is not concerning times right now?
No, it's in the morning times, that we...
Oh, all right.
One of the reasons for doing it on a Monday is the people that you see in the room that we're paying are here working anyway. We have night meetings and when these people come out, we're paying them comp time. So, there's quite a bit of savings. Plus, we need to speak to someone who's an employee of the town, a manager or a fire chief or a police chief. They're easy to contact during the day.
Well, we've had night meetings. Like the skateboard, um, when we had a meeting with the people looking at the skate park or the library. We have night meetings, it's just basically, um, we've had morning meetings, so...
So, I just, I just worry that there's a lot of citizens that work during the day that potentially could come to these meetings if they're in the afternoon.
We've had night meetings. We sit here, actually, we have more people in the morning than we do at night because they're all on, they tend to be. But, um, you know, I mean, that's been the norm. Um, typically, if someone wants to have a night meeting, we've been very receptive to that. I mean, we've had them, okay? Otherwise, we end up sitting here with less people because obviously, a lot of our own employees aren't here at night either, so...
I'll second John's motion.
Is that just the day? Just the day.
He, he changed his motion to say the first and third Monday at ten.
Yep.
So, typically, a motion can be made in the second, discussion happens. Then Sharon will say, if there's no further discussion, we'll call a vote. So, I feel like Sharon needs to have...
I, I do, because, all right. Well, then we need to slow down the process of calling for a vote, at least for a little bit. Somebody had suggested doing one meeting during the day and one meeting at night. Like, the first week of the month, doing it at ten in the morning, and then the third week of the month, doing it in the evening, five or six. I don't know what time.
That was me that made, that thought about that.
Well, I thought, so, I know that it was, but you made a really good, I thought it was a really good idea and it's, that idea is worth mentioning. So, it was Travis's idea, absolutely. But I think it's a good, at least trying it for a couple of months to see what kind of response we get. And if it doesn't work, then we can go back to the ten, but I think it's worth a try.
Well, I think we have a vote on, on the floor as it stands right now, and I think we have a vote on that first, then...
Well, we're discussing that motion, that's what we're doing. We're discuss, discuss, discussing, bleh, that motion, okay? Any, do you have any other?
No, that's all I have.
That's all you have, Travis? And does anyone have any comments?
Yeah, a recommendation. If you're gonna do that, to really get a sense of who really is going to attend it, if it's worthy to even make the change, I think you really need to go a month. That means two meetings day, two meetings night, and then the board can then make an assessment if that change was really worthy or not. I mean, because going every other...
I just get confused, you know, what's gonna happen?
Yeah, I could stand...
It's gonna be a lot like the trash, like the recyclable, okay? Is this the week we put the recyclable out or is it next week?
That's why I just leave them where they pick them up and I just bring my trash down.
Oh, you're one of those. But...
And I just think that, and added to, the tax office went through this before and everyone said you need to be open at night, you need to be open at night.
Nobody showed up.
And they said, okay, we're gonna try this for a month and see what happens. And the calculation was like six people over a month that utilized it. And it was advertised and people were noticed. And so, I mean, I'm not, obviously, trying to interfere with how the board wants to move forward. I'm just making the suggestion, if you really wanna get the real value of, is this just that same group of people that wants to complain but never follow through with their complaints? Or, or only come when it personally affects them? I don't know, I think the only way, uh, my opinion is to try...
Does anyone else?
That was a good point, I, I agree with Donna, but another good, uh, suggestion, just from, I've heard from a lot of people at homecoming meetings, as you know, I like to watch the meetings and the biggest problem is they can hear what the board has to say, but they can't hear what people that had a good idea like Donna just did.
Because she probably should've come up to that.
And, and it is, it's just when you start talking, it's hard to...
I did it, but, so, I think the biggest problem is, oh, is our audio because people start to watch them and then they tell me, I tried to watch that meeting, and then they shut it off because they get aggravated, but they can't hear only half the conversation.
I think...
And I'm, I'm guilty right now, so I'm not...
Right, well, we're all guilty. And I think if I remember correctly, but back when we were in the corner meeting house and, and I'm only, think I remember, that we had priced upgrading the audio and we didn't. It was like thousands and thousands, I think. But, but I thought it would, I thought it would do better when we did some upgrading here. Um, and that is something we have to look at because that is...
Well, I think the biggest thing is people truly should be stating their name for the record and going to the podium, which does have a microphone that is attached to the system that would...
I think we tend, we tend, I tend to get lax because I know everybody. And it's like, okay, Kevin, up to the mic, you know, okay, Kevin, up to the mic, oh, whatever.
If a company is not hearing them, you just need to be more stringent on people getting up and going to the mic.
That's true.
But again, people tell other people and not the people who control that.
Yep, go.
I also just wanna say, I'm not opposed to the morning meetings and I, I do agree with John, it does a good cost savings there and there's not a lot of people, enough people to justify it coming at night. I have no issue with them going back to ten, I just want, hopefully, they'll give them the chance to prove if they really want it at night or not.
I would say too, from an administrative point of view, having to switch from ten to six and the agenda's to stay ten or six.
It, it, it does get confusing.
With the calendar to stay ten to six and making sure, you know, that we don't tell staff that, okay, this one's the, the ten and this one's the six and everyone's...
It is, I think it's, I think it's to go one meeting at, one meeting a month in the morning, one at night is a little, um, will...
Yeah, I have no issue with what Donna said.
We'll be here at the wrong time for the wrong day or whatever, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely, and it's gonna be one day at the wrong end and people will show up and...
And we'll be no different than anything else, we'll say, Alicia, it's, it's five o'clock, it's not ten o'clock, you know, kind of thing, so, I mean...
And then you really need to blow it through fast.
Yeah, really, yeah, really, all right. Well, we do have a motion on the floor, um, of...
Which if John wants to amend it to include maybe starting the meetings at ten for one month and then switching to the six for another month to see how it goes.
Six or was it five? What time do we have on that night?
Six.
I mean, that's up to you, or you can let it stand.
Okay, so we'll go with the original amendment that...
Monday morning.
Monday mornings at ten. Again, if you don't agree with it, you can stop now.
And, and, and we obviously have changed as, as at once. When we had, just a month ago, we had a meeting with the library commission, we were here.
Right, we always accommodate the library.
We, we accommodate, if this becomes, I think if this was an issue that was more than once brought up, then I would agree with, with change. But right now, I don't see the need for the change.
And I can say from an administrative side, since I've been the town administrator and even before, I mean, Jean never discussed it with me really, but we never really got any requests or complaints to us to control that or to relay the message to you that they want night meetings, um...
And then you gotta have a night, if you have a night meeting, what are you gonna do with the planning? You gotta schedule it around...
No matter what, you're not gonna please everyone.
Well, you gotta schedule on the planning board.
They meet the fourth Monday of the month?
So, they're Monday night meetings, so what do you, you know, what?
And I've been to enough planning board meetings and you don't get, you only get the people that are there that have...
The abusers.
Yeah, yeah, and sometimes you don't even get those, so...
And they can be long.
Okay, we, uh, any more discussion, any more discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call number ten.
I forget what, what are we? Let's make sure we know what we're voting on. We're voting a motion, uh, to meet the first and third Monday of each month at ten o'clock in the morning, correct?
Correct.
All right, that's what we're voting on. All right, now you can set roll call.
Okay, roll call number ten, Sunny Patton.
Yes.
John Pike.
Yes.
Sharon Candy.
Yes.
Charles O'Hare.
No.
Chris Moon.
Yes.
Order one motion for this.
Okay, was that old business or was that new business?
That was old.
That was old?
That's what she said.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. Do we have any other business?
No.
All right.
Um, so then that leaves our next, we're...
Our next meeting date is April?
Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have no old business?
We have no old business. Do you have old business?
I have.
Oh, we do have old business, I'm sorry. All right.
April third.
Sorry, Patrick? We have old business.
Definitely reason why that day is bad.
I just wanna bring you an update on Sergeant Park. Excuse me, it's been closed for the winter.
Yep.
As we do for safety reasons and, and maintaining it. Uh, the community page has started, uh...
Wants to know when it's gonna be open.
Wants to know when it's gonna be open, uh, which I have no problem because after this week, uh, the snow should be gone. Most of the snow will be gone and we can move the blankets away from the gates and do that. But we have a safety issue. The safety issue is the tree...
The tree that's hanging on the light.
The tree on Fuller Street that's leaning on the light pole across the fence in the ten, uh, in the basketball court. Now, I talked to code enforcement this morning, Mark. Uh, the resident that owns that tree has been given to April first to make a move to remove the tree. As of this morning, when I talked to Mark, there's been no response. I don't know if Alicia's had any response from the resident?
I would ask Mark if he's here.
I asked Mark, he is not.
No.
So, if we go ahead and open up the park, I'm very concerned that on a windy day, that tree comes down.
And takes, and takes the light pole.
Yeah, it's already taken one of the lights and bent it down. I don't know if it's just loose or broken, but it's just pointed down. The other light's still in place, but the tree itself physically is on the pole. Uh, then on a windy day, if our kids are playing, uh, basketball there, that, that whole thing could come down. So, I mean, I can either open the park when we decide to barricade off the basketball court until this issue's been done, but I can tell you that on a normal day, warm day, there's between twenty and forty kids from the middle school that use that park for a couple hours after school. It's a big gathering spot for them, so I have a very, I have a large concern that somebody would go around the barricades, think, oh, do that.
Barricades aren't gonna stop.
And liability, so, I just wanna break to the board and break to the town administrator that we do have that issue and that we're gonna really have to address it really before we open up the park. And if we don't address it soon, we're gonna get a lot of flak from residents because a lot of people use that park, it's a great park.
Question real quick, if that tree is leaning into our property, do we not have the right to cut the part leaning into our property? I know it was that way in Laconia when I lived there.
We talked about that.
Well, the way the thing's leaning, it stands all by itself and it's, the top third of it is on our side of the fence. And that's what, you know, we probably cut it off, take a ladder truck down there and cut it off, but...
Did you bring a man lift in?
No, it's, it's high. No, it's, it's high, it sits as high as a streetlight.
It's the tree.
I'd really like for a crane to wait till the road's out close, because we have a crane, crane... Crane is going to have to sit in the new parking lot for the PD to take it down. Do we really wanna wait, do we really wanna take a chance on roading the parking lot with a crane to take the street down? So that's just another thing that we need to figure out.
But now, you come into the thing, if, if the property owner hires somebody to take the tree down, don't they have to hire a crane to take the tree down? So the crane would have to go to that location regardless in order to get the tree down, right?
I think what's happened is we've got the price to get the tree down. I think those people have been made aware of the price, and I think you guys are waiting for some type of feedback from the property owner.
This is the tree that's growing out of somebody's foundation, right?
Right. And, and in one of our theories as well, if the tree falls, if the homeowner's insurance is gonna take care of it. We have no guarantee that anyone has home insurance state to state.
Oh, yeah, she might not have insurance on her home, who knows?
Right, if you don't have a mortgage on your home, you're not required to have home insurance, that's your own personal thing. But if that tree does come down, we're gonna incur a thousand dollars in damage. We're gonna have the light pole, the lights, the fence, anything.
Well, I believe we have a thousand dollar deductible anyways, so...
So our insurance company will go after them, won't be our, but we still have the damage.
I understand.
And we still have a, and we...
Not gonna make those people take that tree.
And we still have a thousand dollar deductible, I believe.
Yeah, is there access to that tree from, like, for a crane from their property? Or is it only accessible from the PD parking lot?
Basically from...
From what I was told, from a guy that looked at the tree, said they'll, they'll have to sit in the, in the PD parking.
Okay.
The issue right now is the landlord doesn't wanna take responsibility, they feel it's the neighbors, but through our, our investigation, it is the person whom we've identified as that is theirs, and they don't wanna take the blame or, you know, maybe they don't have the financial needs to take care of it, which, you know, we've given them the thirty or sixty days of insurance warranty, had stayed, um, to take care of it, and at that point, the town will step in and we will seek the reimbursement for the cost.
So basically, I guess, what's gonna happen is the park can't open until, by the sounds of it, if, if they, they haven't made arrangements by April first, then we need to take the upper part of the tree down and build them back. And if they don't pay the bill, then we put a lien on their property. That's where it boils down to.
And then I would do like part of it, we do not, you know, do it until the roads are...
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like the road bands to be released before we do it.
So I guess...
Could, could we just section that part of the park off?
Yeah, but, but as Patrick said, he's, they'll go over the barricades anyways, you're not gonna, but there's not much we can do about that.
But that's a part of us, like, building lots.
Yep.
Yeah, but it still doesn't hurt. Knowing the people that use the park, those kids are gonna go to that basketball court.
Anyways.
So no matter what we do, they're gonna climb the fence, they're gonna do any barricade that we do. They're gonna get in there and they're gonna play. I'm just worried, I don't want to be responsible, I don't want the town to be responsible of a, of a child getting hurt or were in the situation, that's, that's what I'm like.
Can you, can, Craig?
Yes.
You, that you couldn't get a big enough man lift that you could cut the limbs instead of taking the whole tree down? Get a, get, um...
It's actually broken, Ruth, and it's actually supported on the light.
Oh, is it, really? That's, that's not, yeah.
It really needs to be in...
Yeah, a crane, yeah, we don't need anybody.
Really needs to be, uh, lift it off.
Yep, that is...
I guess lift it off, it's gonna cause some type of damage. So what we wanna do is, I mean, what is...
So I guess we don't open the park until it's taken care of.
Can the, can the fencing to the basketball station be blocked? Or is there no way to...
There's no, there's no gate to it.
Is it open door?
It's an open, four-foot opening to come from the main park into the...
So there's no way to cross the door?
And we, and we did eliminate the gate that was in the PD when we did, redid the PD, so they, they can't come through that way.
Come through there.
I guess a question to Craig, will April first give us enough time for the ground to be solid?
No. That's, that's a week by week, day by day, next thing, and I'm hoping it might be the end of the first week of April. That's usually when, that's usually when we lift the gates, so, I mean, but that's no, there's no guarantees.
And, whoops, sorry, sorry.
I'm hoping that's best, the day.
So I guess we don't remove any snow?
Just leave it.
Leave it. And I guess the best we can do is say we're hoping by April fifteenth, just whatever, you know, that we can remove the hazard.
I would say that would be the same date.
We could, we'll remove the hazard and have the park open then, and then we'll deal with what we have to do.
If we use that date, I would recommend that we go on the community page and, and announce that, that on our...
Put a sign up, and put a sign on the park that it will open on the fifteenth of April.
Well, I, just in case he can't get his crane by, or, you know, we get more snow and stuff, I would just open it when we open it and just put it on the community page, I wouldn't make any promises until then.
Well, if you wanna do this, I would schedule.
Yeah, I, I think if Craig can get a schedule...
You can schedule, but I'm not gonna make an announcement on the community page. It's open, if something happens, then you don't get to open on time.
Oh, I'm gonna disagree with that, I think it's important that we put a date on it.
Do we know...
You can put a tentative date.
Do we know what, how, when the thirty day or sixty day notice was given, so we can timeframe it out properly?
Actually, no, he left, I think he must've had an appointment and I saw him leave.
A tentative date was permitted.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause we have to make sure we give them the full notice and then we have time to come take it down.
We've had this for three, four months.
I wanna say she was given either April or May, um...
And this has been going on?
We're gonna discuss this to, to, to her.
I have one more question.
Yes.
So, handling Patrick, I'm not sure, I, I wasn't really involved, and Patrick kinda got the price from my eyes. I, but he, he had told me that, I think tentatively, how the deal was gonna be if they did the two limbs by the bank. He's gonna get the same, some equipment the same day to give us a better deal. So, I don't know if that's still in effect, is that still...
Unfortunately not, because the trees that we're talking about on Main Street are, are tag trees, which is controlled by the Conservation Committee. And I've got a price from your, your gentleman, Carlton, was, which was six hundred and fifty dollars. We have a main tree going up over Main Street, off that are two large limbs that really hang over, and the concern is those two large limbs are weighing down that, it could snap. Uh, I did quote land, I approached land use, uh, they, they came back to me and they wanna use Bartlett Tree Service to get a price in their, in their opinion. Actually, Bartlett Tree Service is gonna be here tomorrow to give me their estimate and their valuation of that tree.
Yeah, so you'll look at the one at the park also, have them do both.
Yeah, that's good, 'cause I mean, I think, I think his price was reflected of doing both. Alright, I'm not, it was, his price to, to, to the town was six hundred and fifty dollars to take those two limbs down, which is a decent price.
And what was the price for the, for the tree?
I think it was twenty-five hundred dollars to take that tree down on Fuller Street.
But that's get the crane, unless...
That's a crane, yeah. Just, we want it on two separate, we want it on two separate invoices.
Right, and I, and I, and I can't do anything until I, I get Bartlett's, or is it the Conservation Committee, uh, makes the decision.
Alright, very good. Do we have any other, any other, nothing, okay?
I think that just for a kind of point of communication, we have two new board members.
Yep.
And as a department head, and I'll speak for the others, I hope, that if you have any questions on anything that we do, or how we do it, or in general, it would benefit you both to communicate with any one of us, just to kinda get a lay of the land as you become the individuals, you know, different than the other three, that will be, you'll probably be first contact now, just because you're new and everybody wants to find the new guy. Um, so it's a strong suggestion that, um, that you come back to us as department heads, you really know, like, what we do, how we do it, and, and if you don't feel comfortable, then obviously, go through the chair or through, um, board chair.
Well, I think it would be important for, for you guys to show up and do, you know, do a tour of the public works facility. If you've never been to the highway crash, you should really come and see what kind of a show it is.
Well, now that, you could take two ways.
I'd say, I, I did learn a lot when I met with Donna about what she does with the Welfare and General Assistant's Office.
Can they serve donuts at the highway where...
Oh, beautiful.
And that's probably at six o'clock in the morning.
I knew this was a Travis O'Hare who was a rep, I mean, I knew very little of him, so it was a great benefit, you know, just to get...
Well, it's a great benefit, because, um, we have a lot of system that we have issues. We're getting a sewer replacement line shoved down our throat.
I call about that, actually, so I need to talk to you guys.
Yeah, I went to that meeting, okay? I about died. We have a Silver Lake, um, dam that I went to a meeting the last snowstorm, that basically DES told them, nah, dream on, and what was the, oh, in our intersection right here.
Yeah, we were just talking about that too.
Intersection, yep, so there's a lot, there's a lot.
I just think it's really important for, you know, the individuals to really have some sort of idea of each department, how they function, and, you know...
The other issue is not to, not to, you know, I, my other problem was, some of these meetings that I've been going to in the last few years, it was kind of a conflict if we had a selectmen's meeting at night, because I wanted to be at the dam meeting, or I wanted to be at, that sounds fine, the dam meeting, or whatever. And there was some conflicts, I ran into conflicts with, if we had had night meetings, with all the other meetings that I've been trying to go to, so, just as a point of interest.
So to, with Donna and Craig's comment, to Donna's, there is one, two, three, four department heads sitting in this room that have my cell phone number, and Craig, you just needed, we talked about this last week on Thursday, so you just need to let me know when's a good time for you to come by.
I'm not gonna call you.
No.
No, okay.
I'm thinking it was, I'm thinking it's more for you to give us of us, and we'll coordinate with you, kinda like independently.
That's, yeah, that is my plan, I plan to do, plan to do that already, yeah.
But further than just a beat and greet, and this is the square, you know? For instance, I'll just do some, you know, like how Donna has half of the dumpster of the mill building.
It's really a copy, but...
You know, um, you know, and all of the above, and so, and I can use me, 'cause it's easy, just be a target.
Right.
But in other things, on the street, you know, there's people that are going, did you know I use it? I'm local general assistant, she's paying for it, she's doing, and you sit there going, and it's like, well, gee, I'm not aware of that, but you know what, I could really, you know, thanks for your, but, um, that. And, I mean, Alicia and I will have many conversations, oh, oh, by the way, this is coming down, and, you know, potentially coming to your office, or something looks like it's explosive. And I think because you are the face of the earth now with the community, it's real critical for, you know, you to have firsthand information on that.
Question for Alicia, do you have, um, a list of department heads' numbers or emails that we can, the new bees can get?
Yes, I can give you all, I, I think, um, Colleen had provided you, did you do the sheet already? And then, okay, yes, we will.
Yeah.
It's been busy to say the least.
Yeah, I know, I just wanted, I'm a paper person, I like paper, so...
Yep, awesome, anything else? Alright, hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Hold on a second.
All those in favor, aye.
Watch out, Alicia, I'm coming to you.
Oh, okay, I thought you were going to get these.
So, the tree, we don't have time to cut the tree.